I'm gonna call and order the August twenty first, uh, more of an regular meeting. Roll call vote.
Alderman Cox.
President.
Alderman Hudson.
President.
Alderman Wilkins.
President.
Alderman Decker.
Here.
Alderman Rogers.
President.
Alderman Magley.
Yep.
All right. The chairman appointed me and pledged allegiance, please, I appreciate it. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the real government for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, that moves us to item four, which is a public hearing, uh, that relates to, uh, setting property tax rates for twenty twenty-three. Correct? Right, so, I'll open the public hearing to talk about, uh, us wanting to look at setting property tax rate for twenty twenty-three. Anybody here for that? With that, I will close the public, uh, meeting and, uh, we'll move on to item, the public hearing, we'll move on to item five, comments from citizens. This time I entertain any comments from citizens. All righty. That'll move us to item six, um, consent agenda, I'll accept all of these, one, unless you want to break something out of the ocean to accept, uh, A, would involve the meeting minutes, B, Public Works Utilities Committee meeting minutes, C, General Government and Public Safety Committee meeting minutes, D, the collector's report, E, the treasurer's report, F, the activity report, and G, the financials report. I move, we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Now, first and second, that the consent agenda be approved, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It passes, that moves us to, um, item seven, accounts payable over, uh, to a hundred and fifty dollars. For a total of, uh, one million, three hundred and thirty-seven thousand, six hundred and ninety dollars and thirty-nine cents.
Didn't add anything after last week's meeting.
And, see, you didn't involve me or, uh...
That's just an anomaly, that's just...
Yeah.
Think we were ahead of the game on some, for last meeting.
We'll take it.
I move we approve the accounts payable over one thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars in a grand total of one million, three hundred and thirty-seven thousand, six hundred and ninety dollars and thirty-nine cents. Second.
Now, first and second, to approve the accounts payable over twelve hundred and fifty dollars for a total of one million, three hundred and thirty-seven thousand, six hundred and ninety dollars and thirty-nine cents. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes. That moves us to item eight, action agenda, under the action agenda. Uh, first is A, would be bill number twenty-five sixteen, setting property tax rate for twenty twenty-three. Any discussion needed?
Will the bill number two-five-one-six be given its first reading by title only? Second?
Now, first and second, she's talking to a city, now, first and second, uh, for bill number two-five-one-six to be given its first reading by title only. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes, read it, please.
A bill of great ordinance entitled, an ordinance fixing the annual rate of taxation in the city of Centralia, Missouri for the year of twenty twenty-three for general revenue purposes, for maintenance and the support of the library, and for establishing and maintaining free public parks. And will the bill number two-five-one-six be given its second reading by title only?
Now, first and second, that bill number two-five-one-six be given its second reading by title only, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes second reading, please.
An ordinance fixing the annual rate of taxation in the city of Centralia, Missouri for the year twenty twenty-three for general revenue purposes, for maintenance and the support of the library, and for establishing and maintaining free public parks. I move the bill number two-five-one-six be adopted by roll call vote. Second.
Now, first and second, the bill number two-five-one-six be adopted by roll call vote, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It passes, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Cox.
Yeah.
Alderman Hudson.
Four.
Alderman Wilkins.
Four.
Alderman Decker.
Four.
Alderman Rogers.
Four.
Alderman Magley.
Yep. Passes, and has the ordinance number, please.
Three-one-seven, thank you.
That moves us to item B. This would be, uh, bill number two-five-one-seven. It, uh, is, uh, legal re-adopting sections of the Centaria City Code concerning procedure, disclosure of certain financial information.
This is the ordinance that we pass every two years for the Missouri Ethics Commission for our elected officials.
Where's what you report every year? Yes.
Yes. I don't get the email in December, if you can't do anything with it until January first.
Right. That's right.
Well, they send you a notice?
Yeah.
Email or mail, I don't remember now, or email.
The mail is pretty good, keeping up with that as well, thank you.
I move the bill number two-five-one-seven be given its, uh, reading by title only, first reading by title only.
Second.
Now, first and second, the bill number two-five-one-seven be given its, uh, first reading by title only. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? First reading, please.
An ordinance to re-adopt section two-dash-seven and section two-dash-eight of the Centaria City Code, concerning procedures for certain city officials and employees to disclose certain financial and other interests or matters affecting the city of Centaria, Missouri. I move that bill number two-five-one-seven be given its reading, second reading, by title only.
Second.
Now, first and a second, that bill number two-five-one-seven be given its second reading by title only, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, all opposed? Passes, second reading, please.
An ordinance to re-adopt section two-one, two-dash-seven and section two-dash-eight, the Centaria City Code concerning procedures for certain city officials and employees to disclose certain financial and other interest matters affecting the city of Centaria, Missouri. I move the bill two-five-one-seven be adopted by roll call vote.
Second.
Now, first and second, that bill number two-five-one-seven be adopted by roll call vote, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It passes, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Cox.
Four.
Alderman Hudson.
Four.
Alderman Wilkins.
Four.
Alderman Decker.
Four.
Alderman Rogers.
Four.
Alderman Magley.
Yep. Bill number two-five-one-seven passes, that'll be ordinance number three-one-seven-three. That moves us to C, uh, authorizing the chamber twenty-twenty-three for wine walk. Uh, be bill number two-five-one-eight, uh, I would entertain a motion.
Question about this one first?
Sure.
Why do we have to pass a resolution for this? I thought we had, uh, passed something a while back that allowed the, uh, city administrator to approve shutting down roads and stuff like that for these events.
I think I had a note that I was going to ask about this one, and then I didn't.
You did, you were.
Um, I didn't know if it, since it involves alcohol and any walking on the public sidewalks with alcohol, if the board had approved that.
I know we approved shutting down roads, I don't know about the alcohol parts, maybe that's why.
So, Sydney, am I correct in my thinking that they should still allow for this through a resolution?
I mean, we've done it that way in the past, I think particularly for this event, and I do think it's for the rationale you've described, is because it involves alcohol.
Okay.
Then they all have a liquor license, or they fall under, what, whose liquor license they fall under?
Um, each, uh, vendor has to have their own liquor license, the chamber applies for picnic license from, um, the ATF in order to allow for it, and then the city just has to allow for it with their own, through this process.
So, what are we gonna do if somebody at Anchorfest wants to do this?
It's, it's not the same, so, the chamber is a not-for-profit, and that's how the ATF has explained it to us, and the facts on how that's allowed.
As long as we remember that, that's good, that's a good reason. So, well, I guess we'll come back to that, what if, like, Rotary wanted to do it at Anchorfest?
Then they could apply for...
Oh, you know, I throw in old that kind of worms, you know, next thing you know, we have a beer garden up there for...
Well, but that doesn't...
Rotary's always said, hey, we'd be up there, but no.
Yeah, but that doesn't, but then, we've talked about it, it doesn't mean that we pass, pass it.
It would be a board decision, I think.
Striking that from the whole...
Actually, the Parks Department would be the one who's kept it from happening in the past.
Who did?
Parks Department. Parks Department won't allow...
We would have control, we would have control of that.
Do we make the IC billiards put their fence up for their beer garden?
I think that's a state requirement.
We have nothing to do with that.
That's private property. Yeah, I mean, that's like a bar having a deal, I mean, I'm very familiar with that one, but, uh, they can't get over their, they can't get over their property line, and they can't be on the sidewalk.
Yeah, the fence is to prevent people from leaving with alcohol, and that's why it's state required.
Yeah, that's anything.
So, how...
And also make sure my place of coverage, aren't you, gets inside there?
Well, I'm not worried about that, how does that get us away from blood and alcohol on the streets and walking around? If they can't do it?
No, no.
It's the picnic license from the state, from ATF.
It's a, it's a different application of, uh, permit.
We could be told that... If somebody wanted to do it at Anchorfest, we could put, we could just say no, we have...
Right, that's, that's why we do these resolutions for these sorts of events where people are seeking some sort of use of alcohol, where we don't, for just the city administrator shutting down straight, is to give the board the control if they choose not to allow alcohol at these events.
I move the bill number two-five-one-eight be given its first and only reading by title only.
Second. Now, first and second, that bill number two, uh, five-one-eight be given its first and only reading by title only, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? First and only reading, please.
A resolution issuing a permit to the Centaria, um, Centaria area Chamber of Commerce of Centaria, Missouri to block off public parking spaces during the annual Centaria Wine Walk on October seventh, twenty twenty-three, and permitting the sale of wine from registered vendors on public property. I move the bill number two-five-one-eight be adopted by roll call vote, please.
And that's wine only, right?
There's going to be wine in spirits.
Should that be in the resolution spirit, too, besides just wine?
Sydney, I defer to you.
It says other...
I mean, it, it says, I think it says intoxicating liquors, doesn't it, in the actual resolution? I don't have...
Did the body of the resolution?
Yeah, it does say, yeah.
Yes, intoxicating liquors, and it covers it all.
Good question. Any discussion? All right, I have, uh, all in favor, roll call vote for bill number two-five-one-eight.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Passes, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Cox.
Against.
Alderman Hudson.
Four.
Alderman Wilkins.
Four.
Alderman Decker.
Four.
Alderman Rogers.
Four.
Alderman Magley.
No.
All right, passes forty-two, uh, resolution, the bill number two-five-one-eight passes forty-two, resolution number is R...
Dash two-three, dash zero-seven.
Thank you. That moves us to D. Uh, amending the trustee for Invesco Investments Incorporated, its resolution is bill number two-five-one-nine, item D.
So, Invesco is, uh, refusing to release any of the funds to our retirees until we get this trustee issue figured out. Matt Harland is still the trustee on there. Um, I've been working with the bank for a year in Invesco to try and get this fixed. We are hoping that this is the last thing that's needed to get it done. So, I'll send this and a plan adoption, um, form, them to fill out, and have them raise over at the bank, and send this resolution in to get it corrected.
Just want Central Bank that we...
Yes.
Have been on.
Yes.
Will the bill number two-five-one-nine be given its first and only reading by title only?
Second. Now, first and second, that bill number two-five-one-nine be given its first and only read by title only, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? First and only read, please.
A resolution of the city of Centaria, Missouri, amending the trustee for the four-five-seven deferred compensation plan with Invesco Investment Services Incorporated. Will the bill number two-five-one-nine be given its, or be adopted by roll call vote?
Second. The first and second, that bill number two-five-one-nine be adopted by roll call vote, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Cox. Alderman Hudson.
Four.
Alderman Wilkins.
Four.
Alderman Decker.
Four.
Alderman Rogers.
Four.
Alderman Magley.
Yep. Bill number two-five-one-nine passes, resolution number is R...
Dash two-three, dash zero-eight.
That moves us to E, uh, bill number two-five-two-oh, uh, leg, uh, legal data pro, uh, committing, prohibiting tents as residence ordinance, uh, that we discussed, uh, any discussion on that, questions, thoughts?
I'd be honored to do this one, since I, I do tents. Just wanna make sure it's residence only.
Yeah.
Move the bill number two-five-two-zero, be given its first reading by title only?
Second. Now, first and second, by Mr. Decker, to, uh, for a first, uh, reading by title only, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes, or first reading, please.
Bill number two-five-two-only.
Reading.
An ordinance prohibiting the use of tents for residency in the city of Centaria, Missouri. I move that bill number two-five-two-zero be given its second reading by title only.
Second. Now, first and second, that bill number two-five-two-zero be given its second reading by title only, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes, second reading, please.
An ordinance prohibiting the use of tents for residency in the city of Centaria, Missouri. I move that bill number two-five-two-zero be roll call vote.
Second. Now, first and second, that bill number two-five-two-zero be adopted by roll call vote, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Cox.
Four.
Alderman Hudson.
Four.
Alderman Wilkins.
Four.
Alderman Decker.
Four.
Alderman Rogers.
Four.
Alderman Magley.
Yep. Passing, yes, Lee. Uh, that moves us to item F, under legal, uh, Ameren wholesale is abused and service kind of agreement.
So, this is exactly what you guys passed last year, except the amount went up. Um, Ameren had told us last year that they would like for us to, to look at the contract every one to two years, so they picked one year. And you'll notice it's up about thirty-four hundred dollars a month. So, our rate has gone from twenty-four something, I don't remember the exact number, um, to the twenty-nine thousand a month.
What will that mean to the average customer?
Well, we would have to make a rate increase. We did do the, I believe, the five and a half rate increase this year, make up for some of this, um...
We didn't have a choice, did we?
I agree.
No. Yeah.
No, really. We don't make our own power, so...
If a gallon of milk's five dollars, you're gonna pay five dollars for a drink of milk.
They're going to fuck.
I believe the document goes January, do you want it?
What makes it, it's coming here?
Twenty-four, yep.
Mm-hmm.
It's all a calendar year, yeah.
December one of twenty twenty-three.
Does it say December one?
Yep.
Okay.
Shall become effective on December one of twenty twenty-three.
So, that'll affect the January?
I think we have a, I mean, we'll have to do the...
Can I ask you a quick question, while I have you all, this is the last time you did an electric rate study throughout the city. If you guys are going to be adjusting rates, when's the last time you actually had a formal rate study done?
Electric, I don't know.
I would just suggest that maybe the board should consider prior to the December meeting, and I obviously talked with our electric department about a formal rate study, since you're going to be instituting an increase, and I suspect you're gonna be seeing increases anywhere from five to seven percent over the next few years, that maybe there's a way that you guys can factor that in so that your customers do not experience rate shock with significant increases that are coming from MISO and FERC.
That would be good to get an understanding, because how long is our agreement? I don't know. So, yeah.
I'm thinking that, you know, start to...
Because when that expires, rates will go up. Probably, so...
When we get those, this was one of the, uh, increase, the demands from them. How do they justify it, I mean, they, they have to, they're regulated, so...
So, in your packet, I did put the explanation document in there on how they figure, um...
They, but they have to, they have to validate their price increases, they just can't come up with a price increase out of their area.
They show us all the improvements that they've made and why it's...
That's what brings them up. And they're gonna continue to, you might as well just smile and like, because it's gonna happen.
Who else, who else would you get gas?
No, it's just electric, you know, every gas.
Yeah, the only other option is, this is a transmission service, so, none of the actual electric providers, even the cooperatives, actually produce their own power. It's something called through the energy wheel, which is regulated by MISO, which is the footprint that your utility sits in, and since you are a member of MPUA, the only other possible transmission option, and I'm not for sure how close it is to Centaria, would be potentially like Boom Electric Cooperative or another cooperative in your area. Um, and that would be something that the city would have to approach MPUA on, potentially in terms of transferring for a wholesale transmission provider.
In twenty twenty-three. Do we have time to look at that?
The rate study does make sense, because we're gonna have to do step-in research, especially since we've got major electrical investments we still need to do.
Yeah, we should do the study, there are all kinds of solar power, uh, systems being put in, but, I gotta tell you, the sentiment against, against those is really... I, I, I don't know that I would go there, because the sentiment for those, the landlords around here would be very resentful of that.
Well, I think at some point, somebody's gotta prove that they're, they're fiscally deficient. To be quite honest with you, same thing with wind generation. So, I think that, you know, make sure that whatever alternative that we're gonna look at was actually an upgrade in, 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 you know, as far as the cost, I agree, I agree a hundred percent.
I mean, they're taking all of the farmway then, for doing...
Oh, I understand that, yeah, there's people, it's, it's a big deal, you know, image delay and all of that, matter of fact, you know...
Yeah, but we could probably put it out there by Chris Feinsch, though, we own that big lot out there.
Yep.
Behind a duplex on Remington Drive.
But you gotta look at, what's it take to have enough power, what's it gonna power for how long, and what, what does that migrate out to? What your upfront cost is, what your return on business, your business case, what, what your return on investment?
Long term.
It's thirty years.
Long term, it's okay, short term, it's really...
Thirty years, but what's gonna be new before thirty years?
May, may not be true, Zane, I mean, when you look at it from a home perspective, I've gone through it and looked to see, if it wasn't for the federal government subsidies, it's, it's not worth it.
And I looked into it, it was gonna take sixteen panels, and it still wasn't enough to fully power my house, I was still gonna rely, I was never going to put more power onto the grid.
So, in this case, this was, I remember two-five-two-one, correct?
It is.
I move the bill number two-five-two-one be given its first reading by title only?
Second. Now, first and a second, that bill number two-five-two-one be given its first reading by title only, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
I'm trying to look at files and, I forget the... A resolution issuing a permit to the, nope, uh, it's all too fast, all right. A resolution of the city of Centaria, Missouri. Golly!
There's a lot tonight.
An ordinance authorizing directing the mayor of the city of Centaria, Missouri to execute a wholesale distribution service agreement with Ameren Services Company of Missouri. I recommend that bill number two-five-two-one be given its second reading by title only.
Second.
Okay, now, first and second, that bill number two-five-two-one be given its second reading by title only, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, it passed, all opposed? It passes, second reading, please.
An ordinance authorizing directing the mayor of the city of Centaria, Missouri to execute a wholesale distribution service agreement with Ameren Services Company of Missouri. I move the bill two-five-two-one be, uh, approved by roll call vote, adopted by, adopted by roll call vote.
Second.
Now, first and second, that bill number two-five-two-one be adopted by roll call, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It passes, roll call, please, Mary.
Alderman Cox.
Four.
Alderman Hudson.
Four.
Alderman Wilkins.
Four.
Alderman Decker.
Four.
Alderman Rogers.
Four.
Alderman Magley.
Thank you, sir. Technology's great.
There's a lot to go through here.
Bill, yeah, bill number two, we got a lot of agenda there. Bill number two-five-two-one, uh, passes at support of the number three-one-seven-five. That moves us to nine, purchasing, uh, bids for plowage, rather for the one-time drop truck, uh, something that was talked about, the devotion, um, to approve that purchase.
The request was that they did go with the lowest bid, right, because they had the equipment from below.
Right.
So, I move that we approve the, uh, the bid with Woody's Municipal Supplies, a total of twenty-four thousand, three hundred and forty-five dollars. Second.
Now, first and second, uh, to approve the twenty-four thousand, three hundred and forty-five dollar purchase, we, uh, I was prepared one time, one time drop. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes. Um, old business, discussion, lead line inventory.
So, um, with this lead line inventory, I was gonna to talk to you guys about that a little bit. So, um, I'm checking in with Gilmore and Bella, I haven't heard back from them yet to see where our bonding capacity is. So, what we got from DNR, we were granted a hundred and two thousand dollars, but the rest of it's a loan. The city can't take that on unless we can pay for it ourselves, or if we have the bonding capacity. If we do not have the bonding capacity, it needs to go on the ballot for, um, our voters to vote whether or not we can borrow this money. Not saying we would use all of that money, but the only way that we can hire a contractor, or the only way that we can use the grant money is if we are hiring contractors to do the lead line inventory for us. We can't use grant money to pay city employees to do our inventory.
So, it's gonna be third-partyed out at that point?
Yes, so, we've got a hundred and two thousand dollars for that, but we're not a hundred percent sure how much this is going to cost, which is why we applied for the money that we did. So, um, once I hear back from Gilmore, if we have the bonding capacity, then we have the money to borrow. But if we do not have bonding capacity, unless you guys state that you want us to put it on the ballot before the end of the month, um, we can't borrow the money, unless, no, we can't borrow the money at all, we would just have to pay the contractors.
Well, my thoughts on it's been, it's changed three to four times now, as it's gone along, as they've started to realize what they're asking with the general statement, but what they expect to be done, that work, become too encompassing, way too much down in the weeds, so, I would say, you know, we, prudently, we should probably drag our heels as much as we can before we start to do what they finally settle out on as the minimum mandatory expectation from municipalities, because it's changed a lot since it started, and they started talking down, they're talking to maybe only fifteen percent of the houses, the businesses, it would have to be checked now, and some things like that, so, I mean, it's, it's a moving baseline of what they expect, a minimum expectation is what I'm saying, so...
I think, yeah, they have to inspect every...
Nope, it's changing, it's...
It's self-destructive.
Twenty percent now, starting out, it's doing it.
Twenty percent of your population...
They were, they were, they started doing it.
Surely did, yeah, yeah, and I, I'm afraid they're gonna find out the twenty percent, so, we don't know if it's not gonna end up at ten percent, five percent, or, we have to go out and audit so many, why, I don't know, you, we don't want to finish up this...
So, that's time we...
So, yeah, went from mandatory, everybody.
They could drag their feet, like he just said, how, a year, two years, six months?
We have until October of twenty-four to get this turned in.
October of twenty twenty-four?
Yes.
We're gonna decide this?
We have to turn in our inventory by October twenty-four.
Has to be done.
Yes.
So, the reality is, if we want it on a ballot as a bond measure, this is it, really, and have time to spend the money.
Yes. Can we lose this grant? No, we can accept the grant, we, we can accept a grant, we don't have to accept a loan.
We, have any idea what the total cost of this is?
Not because we know how many we have to go out and...
Well, and then that goes, because it's mandated, it's third-party money, at that point, you're getting, you got a third-party contractor, depending on how busy they are and how many people are doing it, or not doing it, they could be naming their price at that point, almost.
So, let's say we had to do this in twenty twenty-four, and you had to go deal with the bond and all that. For some reason, could we put it on the November bond issue for twenty twenty-four, or would that be too late? Or would you get to the, back to the April? No, there's another one, isn't there?
We, we'd have to do April, we either get it, figure this out and get it to the county by the end of this month, or we'd have to put it on the April ballot.
Well, that's what we did, you bet.
If you get it on the April ballot, I don't need to interrupt, but if the bond council's able to get the bonds and the proceeds are actually distributed after the actual certification of the election, you're not gonna have time to spend on those proceeds. So, I mean, it's, you're really gonna have to nail it down for November, I mean, and we're really past that point. I think that finalization date for that is twenty-eighth of this month or something, it's very close.
Is it twenty-ninth, twenty-eighth, I can say?
Twenty-ninth, sorry, now that they off.
Yeah. Which is next weekend.
Well, so, this is not on this, I mean...
So, if you, if you pass it, then we, we have to do it at that point, because it was voted on by the taxpayers, we could do that right away, right?
No, I mean, if you vote on it, what it's gonna do, the vote would authorize the city to incur in debt, um, up to the amount of that's required by the bond issue. to incur in debt up to the amount of that's required by the bond issuance. It does not mandate that we spend it. It gives us the spending authority to do so if we-
So if we choose at that point, we legally have the right to do it or not?
Correct, correct, yes.
So if it doesn't pass?
Then we couldn't borrow the money.
We have to borrow the money?
You just, you'll have a cost to the bill about it.
But like I said, I'm still waiting to hear from Gilmore and Bell. We're only wanting to borrow a little over three hundred thousand dollars. We could still have that bonding capacity now. I just don't know if we do. I'm waiting to hear back from-
I think it's gonna take another three hundred thousand, about a hundred and two, I guess.
We don't know. Because it depends on what DNR is gonna look at.
But they end up borrowing, they finalize all of it.
And we don't know how much, if we have, we're gonna bid it out.
If you wanna turn it on the ballot now, how are you gonna explain this to the citizens?
It's not, I don't, yeah, you can put it on the ballot.
That's what we can't do at this time, because-
We can't, we don't even know it ourselves. We don't even know it ourselves.
Is any other communities around, everybody's faced with the same problem, correct?
I'm sure it's gonna be good to-
Maybe, hopefully, somebody will do it and-
Oh, they're probably getting our money for us.
The-
We just have to keep close, keep, keep an eye on what other communities are doing it, if it's-
So what I get, we need to figure out if we wanna go for, put it on the ballot or not tonight.
Yeah. And there's a cost, what's it cost? Three thousand dollars to do that, put it on the ballot?
Two or three thousand dollars.
I'm like, yeah.
We have to pay our portion.
Yeah, I understand, yeah. But obviously, there's your cost for it to put on the ballot, but, but if we give it-
Also, Mayor, I mean, we have to be specific. So in ballot language, what we have to get from Gilmore and Bell, because we can't just ballpark it, we have to have a specific number of what we're looking to go potentially into debt to underneath the bond. So if it's three hundred and fifty-one thousand, four hundred dollars, we need that number to be specific to put that forward to the voters. Until we have that, we can't even craft language to put this forward in the next eight days. So Gilmore and Bell really needs to get care of that number.
Right.
So when are they supposed to give you the number?
Well, I've been talking to them and I don't have it, so I will get with them tomorrow.
We've been talking about this for quite some time, you know, we just barely, didn't really wanna do it and pay attention or whatever. Now we gotta get serious here, don't we?
Well, because of the-
I mean, we have to, you know-
They've been serious in talking about it, it's why it's like the grant, but it's, the number's changing on it.
I only found out a couple of weeks ago that we even had been granted this money.
Well, they're gonna find out it can't be done, because can't everybody get it done?
Well, what do you do when you start having class action lawsuits potentially from people that live in a home and they own their home, they own their own lines? And you're trying to tell them, you have to fix this or not, or the city will replace them for you and put it on your bill. When you own that, you say, I'll drink lead if I want to. It's no different than someone that is sane, is drinking or dragging themselves to death. And if they're coherent, this is a fact, I know it very well.
That's what the-
They say, I know I'm drinking myself to death, I know I'm gonna die from it, but there ain't nothing anybody can do about it.
The mayor will have to explain that to you.
So my point is, my, you know, the whole point is, as an owner, it's the federal government's outreach, an overreach at this point, going to a personal home. I can understand that a municipality need to make sure that we're not providing lead, water to the patriots, right? We owe them that. But when you start to get past our public system and infrastructure, you're starting to go to your personal property, that becomes a real issue when it comes to constitution and your rights. So that's gonna be a big thing, and I think they're gonna start to get slugged in the face with that too, the federal government potentially. And how do you, how do you enforce it? How do you mandate it? With the people, you come to their meeting, you tell them you've got lead in there, and they, they tell you the pound's in, and that's probably a nice way to tell you.
It's gonna be lawsuits.
Potentially could be, it's speculation, but you know it's not gonna go smoothly.
But we have to make up our mind before-
But we've got to figure, if we get the information to know what we specifically are asking for as far as funds, to go along with a hundred and two thousand dollars, correct? From our legal counsel.
Who's driving this? Is it Missouri, or is it the federal government?
I suppose it's the EPA. And also, the other thing that I might suggest is, if we're not able to get this put forward, because, you know, obviously, they put us into a time crunch, we could potentially, I mean, I would ask for an extension of time in order to comply with this. I mean, and to the mayor's point, I know that other cities are in the same position that Centray is facing in terms of whether or not this is a significant government overreach in terms of requiring private property owners to undertake this process. And what authority does a local government have to require a local landlord to do these sort of things? So it's also potentially, we could ask for an extension too, in order to comply with this. That's, that's the next suggestion I would suggest versus necessarily rushing head forward, trying to increase our deadline when we don't know a number.
So can we explore that too as well?
Yep.
And then if there's a need for a special meeting, we could have it, you know, they gotta have it by the twenty-ninth, so.
That's next Monday.
What are we gonna warn between now and then?
Well, we first gotta get the information about the, the bond capacity number, right?
Because if we have the bonding capacity, then we're good.
We don't have to have, we don't need to vote. We don't need to know the ballot. If we got enough room, then we've got the money internally to do it, for us to use. If not, it has to be borrowed money, we gotta get approval for that, and we gotta request it on the ballot. And although, soon as they tell us, well, I mean, it may become a new point if we got the money. I'm not all for taking on more debt than we had to as a city. I'm worried, I'm worried about, you know, light poles and transformers still going up more at some point, or stabilized at three or four times across.
This is the problem we didn't need at this time. I mean, we got some, I mean-
I'll take the problem most cities need right now.
So I don't know, I think what we have to look at this time, we know we have to get the number for where we're at with the bonding dollars, right?
Right.
And what, we're under the cap or not, right?
Right.
And if we are, then this is a new point, we don't have to worry about it. If not, then we have to figure out, we get the information, know exactly what we'd be asking for, or at that point, from, from, with your help, Sydney, figure out how we can ask and request a, an extension, right?
We gotta be educated on when a citizen asks us why we have, why is this on the ballot, and we have to know.
Well, then they gotta vote, it's gotta get voted in. It's gonna look like a little cost to the citizen.
That's what it's gonna look like.
It really is. It's our, it's our tax money that we're borrowing more, that we gotta pay back. So, it'll be, it's a, but I, I think these are the facts that we have, right? We have the fact that we gotta find out what the number is, so we know whether or not we need it at all anyway. Or we can apply for it and not need it, and put it on the ballot if it gets passed, or we can ask for an extension. Those are probably our three, those are the three options at this point, and might not even be something they have to talk about if it comes back.
Do you have any questions to extension from?
DNR.
Yeah, we would just go to DNR and ask for an extension. It's almost kind of like equivalent to a variance, when you guys were asked for a variance for an ordinance, we would ask for an extension, you know, from, from the due date. And even, I, I can't believe we try that, I bet that they would probably be amounted to it.
We've got to know them pretty well.
Yeah.
For our projects, so. Yeah, I mean, so I mean, I think that's where it's at for us. I mean, we can, we can hash around on it, but the bottom line is, based on this, then this, or this, you know. We gotta find out the first, then the first eliminates all the discussion, really, at that point, if we're, if we're in bounds on the money bill.
Hey, the other side of this, I wanted to talk to you guys. A lot of cities are for the homeowner's side, sending out surveys for the homeowner to fill out, so they can look at their connection inside their home. Some people are gonna know, some people aren't. But the survey really looks pretty good. A lot of cities are doing it. Aaron has reached out to a couple and gotten one back that's, it looks really good, but it, one page fully explains the whole process and the survey and what we're asking for. The next page has pictures of each type of material that could be connected for their water line. It's got lead, it's got plastic, it's got pecs, it's got all that. And then it describes it so that when they go in to look at their line, they can see what it is, look at this little chart, and then note, and put on there, I have this.
So will that count? My question would be, I think it's great. The survey could be great to send out, newsletter, get that back, whatever.
How many people know what they've got?
But, but, well, that's the other part of it. But the point is, does this count towards what we would be, our number, can we take their word for it?
It would be a total per city fee news, that way we know on the homeowner's side what it is.
Okay, so we can use this as-
Not exactly a hundred percent participation.
We wouldn't have to send it to everybody. I mean, the new subsidies, they know they don't have lead.
Yeah, well, you're-
Right.
You know.
Yeah, but that gets you, that gets you numbers.
Any, any home-
Percent of they got plastic PVC in their subsidies.
They got pecs, yeah. Yeah, that gets you a percentage.
Right, it does. It proactively gets us to a percentage if they say we have to do eight percent of the households and all the businesses in town.
This is commercial too, correct?
Correct. It's every water connection.
So landlords is your number one, you know, that own a bunch of-
And they may be more special on commercial, because if it's commercial, there's potential that the public is utilizing their water source, right? So, I mean, it just depends. But when it gets to the resident side, a real resident side, it becomes, it's a very gray area to be getting into. So I sure, I'm gonna tell you, I sure as hell, I'll tell you right this, I sure as hell do not want us to behalf and tell somebody, you're gonna replace your pipes, and if you don't do it, we're gonna have it done for you, and then we're gonna put it on your bill. Can you imagine the nightmare that would be with the, with the staff up here at the city's trip? It'd be crazy.
We're gonna need a longer CD.
I can upgrade our variance.
Yeah, but, but you know what I'm saying, it's, it's not gonna settle people, I mean, it just is on their residential side.
We're gonna sell some papers.
I, I can understand that the city needs to, to know what they have, to comply, because you're providing that to people, and you wanna protect the people from what you're providing, you know. It's gotta be a level, potentially, you know, businesses, you know, commercial have to be accountable, depending on what they're doing with the water, you know. I mean, so, I mean, I see some, some legitimate need in that, but not, when you get the residents, it becomes ridiculous.
So what are we doing? We're gonna wait until you get some information back?
Gilmore and Bell, I'm not-
So stay tuned, we might have to have, depending on what goes on, we might have to have a, a special meeting.
Yep.
For this specifically.
I did probably ask DNR about it. I don't think the regulations, what they want, are not clear.
Well, and I think that that's what's created, and then they've given it to us a short amount of time. So I think that there's a real case of why there should be an extension, not just for us, but for all other municipalities.
Well, they oughta know how many, they oughta give you a twenty percent or whatever before they make you go out and try to give them more money.
I agree.
They oughta, it oughta be set stone before they start pursuing it.
Well, it wasn't a hundred percent at the beginning, now they're down to twenty, so-
Well, that's what I'm saying, you know, it was a hundred, now it's down to twenty, but they oughta, it oughta be set in stone before they have-
Yeah. You know, I could see to where a hundred percent auto ability for a, the municipality itself and what they own, and X percent for commercial and residential, if you could do five percent or something. I don't know. We'll see what they come up with, I don't know. The ones that elected to know everything, so that'll be have at it. So we beat that pretty hard, that old business. And we don't know much of anything more than-
No, we didn't.
Well, it's hard, really, to be honest with you, I mean-
We, we passed that over, and we have no idea what we're calling it.
So what we don't have to put on the ballot is, the city said we gotta wait and have this act, so. You'll look at those two things and find out what, if they would be considered of an extension if need be.
Yeah.
Two things, right, three, two action things for us to do. So, so Tara's gonna check to follow about what an extension would look like if need be, because of the shortness and the lack of clarity of the expectation, right, that's been set for us to borrow money for, which is ridiculous for us to say, you know. So that, but first, as well, along in conjunction with that, is to find out what the, what the number is.
Right.
Of the bond that's left, right? So if we're clear on it, then we don't have to worry about this other. And then, and a good thing about that part of it is, we can, we can wait along and see what they, how they ship this out, you know. All right. Any more discussion on the lead line inventory? I wish it was lead line, it would've been easier, I think, than the lead line. Let's leave it. Eleven, discussion, RV ordinances we've talked about. So I'll turn it over to you, and Sydney can talk through that.
So Sydney and I didn't talk last week about the RV ordinance, and I'd like for Sydney to have the opportunity to explain why this is the one that she presented, because a lot of it had to do with the fact that we don't want to allow people to live in their ordinances, which is why we wouldn't want them on residential property. But I'll let, I'll let Sydney explain it.
Yeah, so I mean, basically what this is, or what I understood the board's direction was, is that, you know, we don't want these big, heavy RVs parked out in front of, you know, homes that potentially impacting the thoroughfares and, and I hate to say this, but for lack of, just, just parked out there, just, you know, people living in them, running extension cords or whatever else for extended periods of time. But also, it was to restrict them from becoming residencies. And so when something is considered a residence, there are specific additional constitutional protections that are placed around what might be considered a residence. So if the goal of the ordinance is to prohibit these RVs from becoming either permanent or temporary residences, whether they're parked out on the street or parked out on someone's private property, it's difficult for law enforcement to know when these RVs might become a residence when they're parked next to someone's house. And then the requirements they have to pursue are similar or identical to like a, a search warrant for a house, right? So I just would like some feedback from the board of exactly what the goal of the ordinance truly is. Is it to prevent these from becoming residences, or is it just to prevent them from being parked out on the road, stopping traffic, and or just kind of, you know, impacting, for lack of a better term, the reputation of the city? That's what I would really like to get some guidance from the board on.
Well, I think what we passed recently, took care of the parking on the city right of way. To me, the concern is people living in an RV parked on their driveway. It's, it's not safe, it's not sanitary, it's not, I, I, there's no way that's safe. And I don't see why it would have to be put in a building. I, I'm not quite understanding this yet.
Yeah, I mean, we don't wanna penalize the people who are properly storing theirs, you know, on a pad of some sort, on their property, but not living in it.
Yeah, well, we think the heartburn was it had to be kept into, it could be, had to be kept in a building and so forth like that. There's a lot of people that, that don't have a building, but they have an RV that they camp with during the summer and so forth, and they use it as a recreational vehicle the way, you know, normally they're used. And we didn't wanna put undue hardship on them for owning one, and, you know, we, we would wanna make sure that it's on gravel or a pad or something, and, and kept in a neat and orderly way, but not that it had to be in a closed building. And that, that's what that ordinance reads like, and I think that was part of the heartburn we had, right?
Yeah, I mean, drive around town, you can find dozens of them. There's people who have them stored properly.
Yeah.
Neatly.
And they're not living in them. We don't wanna penalize those people. It's, we want to avoid the handful of issues where people have been living in them.
Well, and, and does it make it, would it be a difference, you know, we have people that come and visit in RV, right, that, that they travel, hey, that lovely dude on, on my wife's side, and they would, they would come in, you know, we don't wanna keep people from being able to come and visit, you know, for two, three days, a weekend, what have you, or come in for a graduation or something, you know, and, and then be able to get a permit from city hall saying that they, that way the police would have some, they'd be able to have your permit to be able to live in it, or be, you know, be residing in it as a recreational vehicle, and there'd be a definite timestamp on it. Maybe it would be the way around, I don't know. I'm just throwing that out to Sydney to, to, to think about.
So, so some communities will require, like the second instance, you have somebody coming in for RV for seven days, because, you know, the grandson, right, that's graduating from the zoo, and they're, you know, coming in to visit. Most places to address, which I think part of our concern is, is to require a permit for the temporary use of a recreational vehicle as a temporary place of abode for a certain period of time. Those have to come and give a description where they're parking it and how long they intend to be there, and there's a small fee paid basically for the processing. And then that way, police have the ability to monitor, okay, they said they were gonna be here from August first to August eighth, and then if it's still there afterwards, then we can pursue something. We can definitely go that route, and I can definitely tweak the opening part of this ordinance, not to fire a fully enclosed building, but, you know, parking on a pad or concrete structure or, you know, whatever direction the board would give in terms of how we like the recreational vehicle.
It's, it's, it's just like a hang tag they give you if you go to a condo, or you go somewhere or a park, that, that has a date of, of your stay. And when that runs And when that runs out, they come by and look at it, they, they have the ability to tow your vehicle, again, you know, at that point, you got to get square with them. So, yeah, I think that.
I think that would bring some relief to the situation, and not have to be enclosed in a building, if there's a way to talk about that. We, we, we think that's too, too much overreach for somebody that has a recreational vehicle they use. I mean, I don't use one, but there's a lot of people do, and I can understand that that would be kind of a little added hardship on them to. We, we get a lot of blowback from that because there'd be a lot of good citizens, and most people are with campers that seriously take it up, you know? But there are those few that abuse it, use it.
Would something just about people using it as a temporary residence be enough? Could we take the rest of this and pass it aside, and we're just worried about people living in it?
Well, like, for instance, to answer your question, Alderman Hudson, so for, in Columbia, if you have a recreational vehicle, you need to park on private property, you have to obtain a permit. It's a small permit fee, I think it's fifteen dollars, there's a year. That way, the city keeps inventory of where, who has, and this is, and I'm not saying this is the right way to, you know, route to do it, but at least the city has a some mechanism to track, you know, who has a recreational vehicle in the city and that they tend to park it on, you know, property somewhere. And then the next step is, is that if, if somebody is paying and using it as a temporary residence, you know, once, twice, three times a year, whatever you guys might want to pursue, they can apply for a license for a temporary abode for no more than, you know, whatever daytime thing you would want to put on it, seven days, fourteen days, you know, something around there.
Yeah. I'd say I like the latter part of that, the first part, it feels like we're just trying to manage something that's not an issue in many cases.
I absolutely agree, just like I said, I'm not saying that's definitely the right way, that's just one, one example of the way, one leading this address. And I don't know how frequently this is coming up for the city of Centralia in terms of people living in these.
Well, and, and there's a few, I mean, we, it, it's, it's, it's almost like a, I, I don't want to misrepresent this or orphan anybody, but it's, that's kind of where it works, is us people having, people in tents, you know, like Columbia and some other places have. These people know somebody are getting into somebody's trailer, going to use it, you know, and they start making it a residence, and they, and they'll stay there forever if, if, you know, unless you, you know, and we don't have any mechanism to manage that at all, and that's why, you know, I think that there's, there's probably seven, eight or ten a year that somebody goes to use one, at a minimum, probably, of people that are using these for the wrong reasons and using it as a residence. Or somebody's living on a residence, and somebody lives in the house, and they're living out in the house because it's almost like a, an apartment.
And the other route we can go is, we already have on the books, under section thirty-one, dash eleven, certificate, certificates of occupancy, these are occupancy permits. So, basically, if someone is, is occupying a building or structure that does not comply with our building health code laws, and we can certify that to the city administrator, you know, we would have somebody to test and, you know, basically, law enforcement, I guess, it comes in and says, yes, you know, this does not meet the definition of our building codes and structures. And we can also pursue that, you know, as a nuisance violation at that point for them having an RV and having that living. And so, we do have a certificate of occupancy permit, and I have suggested to Tara that we need to beef that up more, it's basically like three sentences.
Yeah, that's true.
And that's, that's another route to go, is to really maybe build that occupancy permit ordinance up too, and may also help address some of these concerns.
Yeah, that puts the, that puts the police department in a tough spot, you know, it's vague, you know? Vague is, you don't overcomplicate something, but you want to state it where it's, it's, it's clear enough that there's not loopholes. Because some of these people that you, you get to talking to, they, they sure are slick in some ways.
Well, exactly, because this one actually talks about a building, it doesn't talk about like temporary structures like an RV. I mean, I, like I said, I, I suggested that another area we could pursue, rather than just targeting RVs specifically, is to strengthen that occupancy permit section of our ordinances. So, it would also cover things like, you know, like somebody's using a, you know, with a storage box that you get off the back of a, a, a train, for instance. People are using those sometimes and sticking them in the garages and living out of them, or somebody's living in a garage that really isn't built for residency or an RV or tents. If we, if we strengthen that occupancy permit section, it may cover a lot of other issues as well.
We've had them living in a shed, in an RV inside the shed.
Exactly, so if we, again, strengthen that thirty-one dash eleven, that occupancy permit requirement, then it would give a lot more teeth for not just the RV issue. But if you want me to target the RV issue, I will definitely go back and take a look at other ordinances and provide some more suggestions for the board. But again, my also encouragement is to take a look at that occupancy permit requirement too.
If we can strengthen that so that we can, we have the teeth that we need, I mean, that addresses the issue, it sounds like. We don't need something else for, you know, the office here to manage if we can avoid it, but address the issue.
Yeah, but then, then the other side of the coin, so what do you do with this ordinance viola, you know, if it's an ordinance violation for structures? And it's a, it's an RV, and somebody says it's a recreation vehicle, you know, I mean, I mean, I don't know, you got to delineate, I mean, it's got to be really clear that those fall in that category.
Did we have an ordinance where you couldn't plug RVs or camper into your house?
I have not found one yet, I did talk to Cindy about it, she recalls talking about, about it back then, but she's not certain that anything was.
I don't see anything passing, one of the things that I suggested to Tara that we need to look out for that for a circumstance, Alderman, I believe, is that I'll call on the electric side, because there are prohibitions in certain, like, electric codes about the feedback, I, I don't know if they call it, I think, I think, actually, my dad turned this the other day, so that stuck in my head, dirty energy, I know that's not right, but that's all that I can think about at the moment. But strengthening the section of our electric code to prevent people from plugging in, running generators and other things that may negatively impact our electric grid as well, that, that can be one way to address that and other issues that would come up.
Well, a lot of times, the dirty energy goes back into the overloads, the source that's drawn, you know, plugging in a lot of times. So, you know, we've had people that burned up in a camper before, you know, out there in communities, because they were plugged in, and they were getting more heat back in the electric because of the, the system, right? So, I mean, yeah, I think that that's a good thing to, to make sure we have something in place for that.
So, just kind of hearing from the board a little bit, would you like me to continue to narrow it down and look at the RV ordinance? Or would you prefer me to look at an occupancy ordinance? And also, would you like to add, and I'm just going to call it this now, the mayor called up this, and I guess we're, we're just going to call it the dirty energy ordinance, because it's kind of fun to say that, right? Want me to draw out dirty energy ordinance?
Yeah, that, that could be my mark on your trailer, coming out here. Yeah, dirty energy.
What would you rather have to pursue with it?
Well, I think, I think.
Harlan? What do you mean, like more teeth or just continue?
They cover more.
Yeah, he, he asked Harlan the question, Harlan said he just needs, no, but he asked Harlan the question because they're the ones that have to enforce it and show up. And if there's, if it's a generality, then, then you're in a, a match, you know, and, and you, you know, that's not a good situation to be in, because you don't have anything concrete to be basing your actions on from a legal side and them enforcing the law, so.
I, I can tell you this, whenever we're trying to look at whether something is quote unquote illegal or against an ordinance or law, it, sometimes it's very difficult to decide whether or not it is a violation or it is not. Does that make sense? Because sometimes it's so damn vague that you can't understand, you can't make your pieces fit in. But then other times, it's not, it's not, it doesn't explain enough, like, maybe between the hours of eleven and seven on certain noise violations, right? So, I mean.
That's another one.
That's where you, that's where we come into having issues.
We, we need a quiet time for, where you can't have generation running between a certain time of the day.
But I don't know that that goes really with this.
No, 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 but that's another, but what, what he's saying is, we need to write it to where, I don't want us to have the excuse that if we go out to enforce a law, we can enforce a law because of this, this, and this, right? I want, in, in most cases, we want it to be more clear enough, and you've got enough, that they can go, we don't need to write a novel, but we need to write enough in that it's, it's very clear, and it's not, it, it falls in this category, it's this, this is why, these are the two things, these are two reasons, or this is the one reason, and you can't do this, we're going to go out, right? For you guys to have, it's pretty, 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 it's got to be definite, right, as much as you can get.
If we can take the occupancy code and make it clear that people can't live in an RV for more than seven days, four times a year, something, I'm making up numbers right now, I think that would be a good approach.
So, so you're the guy living in the house in, in RV, you leave for two days, and then come back in and squat for another fourteen days. How do you keep up with that as a police officer to enforce that?
I think they need hang tags. That's the only way you're going to be able to enforce it.
Would you, would you not be dealing with that potential with these people that are the problem?
Well, I mean, it's like parking a car on the street, we used to have to mark the tires to see if they're moving. But I can't just arbitrarily walk up on someone's property to enforce a law.
Right.
I just, I mean, I mean, you're, you're putting the city, we're putting the city in a bad position, and you're putting officers in a bad position for really a code violation, I mean.
But if they have a tag that they have to do, have it displayed toward to be legal, does that help you?
I, I, that's a great question, I don't, I don't know if that's going to help you much at all anyway. I mean, that'll tell you, yeah, okay, yeah, it's a violation, but normally, I'll send, Sandy deals with those as she goes and knocks on the door and tells them, you have this violation or whatever. So, I mean, potentially, that would, that would be an indication of whether or not something has been approved to be parked. I sent Tara thirty pictures of, of different kinds of trailers and RVs parked in, in different ways, and a majority of them weren't causing any problems because, you know, we're not just storing them. But the ones we were talking about is the, the handful of ones where people were hooking up sewer and power and extended living. So, I mean, if the ordinance addresses power, sewer, and extended living, I think you're going to sat, you know, satisfy your requirement for an ordinance.
Right, and that's what we want to address.
Right, that's what I'm saying, if, if, if the ordinance says that, then.
It gives you what, most of the time, what you.
Yeah, yeah.
Would that help clarify it, or do we make it worse?
No, I think it helps to clarify it, it gives me something to go on, because I, I'm, I'm hearing more so focusing on an occupancy permit permit, whereas Harlan just outlined, you know, it's focusing on power source, the sewer source, which requires sewer permission for sanitary, and the extended living. So, I, it does give me some much better direction and where we need to really look at this. And again, it, it can also look at the power generation piece as well, so this, I, and I, I can make it more specific by doing the occupancy permit versus what we have been doing with the RVs.
Unfortunately, when it comes to protecting the public from themselves, sometimes, because you have to, because there's legal that's tied to us, once we become knowledgeable in the situation, we become culpable at that point, because once we know something, then, then we're responsible for doing something about it. So, I, I, I worry if somebody burned themselves up in these houses and this and that, and the next thing you know, we have a huge lawsuit. And I always hate to say we should be dictated by getting sued, but legalities. But typically, that's because someone was allowed or got themselves in a situation that created the ability to have a legal suit against you. And so, I just want to make sure that we're protecting some people from themselves, all of them, right? Whether they're a state or whatever, why they would be living in these places, I don't know, but they're going to do it, and we have to have recourse to, to get them out of it, as soon as we, we become aware of it. What else on that? RV ordinance may not be the RV, it will just be the ordinance about citizens. Are you good, Cindy, on that?
I think, yeah, I think I might have some direction, so my plan is, is to get Tara some examples and then to circulate it, I guess, to the committee and, you know, to narrow down infected, but I would, I would tackle this from the occupancy permit side.
Good, thank you. Appreciate that, that moves us now to new business, number twelve, tree services for the city.
Okay, so, what we normally do every year is, we put so much money towards a contract, and the electric department gives us a list of what they think are the worst trees in town, and then we hire a contractor to come in and they take out all those trees. Inevitably, a week after that, or even a day sometimes, we get someone who calls, and they tell us that they need this tree taken down, that's really bad. Our electric crew can only take down trees if they're of a certain size. If they're bigger than that, then we don't have the capacity to cut them down, and it's dangerous, and it's detrimental ability. So, what Matthew, Rush, and I would like for the board to consider is, instead of having this one big contract, that instead of doing that, that we do an RFQ for qualifying services and have a contract with someone throughout the year. We still only put so much money towards the trees, but we have a contract, a contractor that we can contact and say, hey, we have this tree over on this road that needs to be taken down, and they can go and take care of that for us.
With a contractor garage for the year.
Beds and all that.
Well, you'd have a contractor garage, whoever gets it, you'd have a contractor.
We already had that place on that.
Yeah, but you know what your cost is going to be.
We locked in with no bidding.
And, you know, I, I was talking about this the other day.
That doesn't, isn't going to make the lake department think they ain't got to cut trees anymore, right?
No, no, that's not it, that, that, it would just be, instead of just having one list, two contractors, that they get done in six to eight weeks, not long it takes them to cut those trees down, and then we have no tree services for the rest of the year, that we'd be able to push this out and do it throughout the year.
And call when needed.
And call when needed, like, when we have a big storm and one of the city trees, that's a huge city tree, has a problem, our electric crew's unable to take it.
Well, I, and, and that, that adds to, I think, the, we, we've got the streets and everything on a good rotation, it looks like to me, you know, what we're doing as far as the lifespan, life cycling those, and which streets we're working on. Think y'all did a really good job of getting that in place, that we've been working towards that since I came to mayor. I think we need to have the same thing about the right of ways. The less risk we have of tree limbs that are really marginal, we should have marginal right of ways over our power that's in the air. Because a, a windstorm or a ice storm puts that at real risk, and we, so if we could proactively have that on the life cycle, making sure we're not just doing the bare minimum, we're also getting ahead of the right of ways.
It's not just you, like, you have a tree that may just fall over the road.
Well, no, absolutely, I agree, I mean, I, I would, I would.
I would say if you're getting into right of ways, you need to do a lot more than just trees. I mean, you go down miles and all them fences are in the right of way, and all that power's above ground.
Well, I'm not worried about a fence falling on the pole or breaking.
Well, I'm just saying, if you're getting into right of ways, you need to get it right of ways completely.
I, I understood, but I'm talking about if we're going to look at the life cycle of how we're clearing the trees, the tree services, as we look at what we're doing with the tree part of it, I would agree, everything under it should be looked at.
But you're going to save money, because the tree service is going to have a little bucket thing that they can drive down the right of way, but if they can't.
We're going to put a budget on this, because a, a tree company can make millions off us, and so, I mean, you got to have a cap on how much we can use.
We're already done, we have a budget line, and that's the problem that we run into, as Tara was saying, is we have a budget, we spend it all.
Yeah.
And then, a day or whatever.
We're done, we're done, yeah.
This is where we have some capacity.
So, you're not, similar like we do with like engineering services and stuff like that, getting all the group people, I think that's a great idea, and then spread it out, how the groups mix.
Just can't be.
And you still got management, right, it's, it's a budget on it, you got management, you will.
Does Earl, does he get to keep cutting trees down?
Earl takes care of the park's trees.
He gets to keep cutting trees down, so.
Yeah.
Don't contract him. He does a good job of cutting them down, though.
He does a good job of planting them, too.
Yeah.
I need to look at more of what are, in order to stay a tree city, I know that we have to make sure we maintain and keep enough trees, but.
Well, I guarantee you, Earl's got to be planting enough trees for all of us, I mean, there's no question about it.
I hope he planted sixty-five last year.
I mean, he does every year, I mean, he plants a lot of trees, and the point is, he cuts down a fifty-year-old tree and, and, you know, he told me, I said, we put three back, and the guy goes,
He's put miracle.
My grandchild's way told me, him and his grandchildren could grow up and wouldn't get any shit for those sandwiches, so, anyway. We move on, we digress, let's move on. So, to tree stuff, are we, you know, I think we're all.
That's a good idea, just, I think you, you need a cap on it, I mean, sometimes.
Good with that. Item thirteen, mayor, appointments, I have three people that are wanting to renew on the park board, Phil Hewland, Dale Davidson, Bedd Reynolds, for three-year terms for the park board. I would entertain a motion to reappoint them or, or not.
Second.
First and second, appoint the three named folks to the board of the park, all of them. First and second to appoint the three named folks to the board of the park, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I have one decenter and five that were four, so pass this. And that moves us to city district.
Anybody have any questions?
New, well, maybe our new business. We were talking about the meeting during the time we're gonna have MML.
That's down here.
Okay, good. Got it.
I know one thing that is gonna come up is the audit. We're supposed to have the audit to the state by the end of September. Williams Keepers has a scheduling conflict in September and can't present the audit. So, we're looking, they're gonna ask if they could come, I believe, while we're in MML. Is that the date she shot back? The only things that came back that looked possibly workable were September the thirteenth or fourteenth. So, we could call a special meeting at that time. Otherwise, they want to present in October. There is a grace period, so we're not gonna get fined immediately if we don't have it turned in. It's just Marilyn and I had a goal, and she worked really hard and got everything to the auditors and.
But I ask you, was the presentation though, it's not required? Just see, it's required to the board to present it, but in order to be submitted to the Secretary of State's meet at September deadline, the board doesn't technically have to accept the audit. It just, it could go. I mean, the presentation through the city is always basically a formality.
And then they could come and do a report on that. That was my.
So, if they get it to us, we can submit it before the board sees it?
Yep.
Okay.
I mean, I would circulate it at the same time. I would show the board in advance. You could, you could circulate it in an email. It isn't, you know, it is, it would be open record if it went to the entire board of the board. It would be considered an open record at that time. Absolutely, I can get some camera. But yes, you could absolutely circulate it ahead of time and then submit it before they come to present in October. That would be my recommendation unless there's something extreme in it.
Well, that makes it easier not having to have a special meeting potentially.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Yes, thank you, Sidney.
Yeah, great news. Is that it?
I don't really want to hear any questions. There's lots of meetings and working on stuff.
Moves us to fifteen. Anything for us from you, Sidney?
I just wanna remind you, I know it doesn't seem like it's possible, but the army is close to the pre-filing of bills for the next legislative subject. We are at the end of August, so it's already municipal. They're starting to take, you know, basically advice, guidance from cities on issues they're seeing to potentially start drafting upcoming legislation. For those of us that were going to MML's meeting, there usually is a discussion about that. But if anybody sees any issues that you believe we should address under, you know, changes in laws or statutes, be thinking about those, get those to Tara or myself, and we can potentially work with MML to potentially add that as part of their legislative agenda. So, if there are any items, please start thinking about that because they will want that submitted by the first of October. So, that would be my update for now.
Good. Thank you. That moves us to sixteen, the sixth quarter.
I don't have a lot. I was going to ask for guidance on the audit. We got that covered. Yes, next month, there'll be several of us attending MML.
Our staffing's enough. We have a part-time person training.
Still, trying to get.
And.
You're great. Yes. We talked at length throughout the past year about problems with our uniform provider, so we're quickly becoming, we're coming to the end of that. Yes, we've reached, talked with them again. If we reach a resolution, we'll be ending that shortly.
Yeah, do that counter.
Yeah. And they have no qualms about it. They, they said they know that it's, that they messed up, and they're letting us get out of contract.
Just now, historically, all the companies are about the same.
Yeah.
I don't follow them, I think, unless some news came up in the last couple of years.
Yes. Not doing the uniforms.
We got the previous. Take your own.
It has been unbelievable. But we're getting to the end, so that's.
Yeah, you're right.
Multiple states.
That moves us, we had, I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, we had on the agenda a closed session, but we didn't have the information we needed for that, and so we will not have a closed session tonight. So, we won't be the motion for a closed session. We're in a closed session Friday the seventeenth. There will be no need for ratings or return to open session because we never have left. That moves us to as may arise, A is the community room discussion. It was brought up. So, you can bring us up speed. What's some concerns with the community room are?
So, the community room is in disrepair. The plaster at the top of the wall is bubbling out. Our insurance carrier has noticed it, and so that we probably shouldn't, we should reconsider renting it out until we have it fixed. I don't know what it's gonna take to fix it. We are receiving complaints from people who are renting it and that's how it looks. So, I would like for the board to consider that we not rent it out anymore until it is repaired. I'd welcome you all to walk out there and look at the plaster business, see how bad it is, but.
Well, we don't have that repair stuff.
We need money to repair it.
We don't have any money?
So, so let's ask this question. How much is it used?
It is several times weekly.
So, there's a lot of participation if you.
Almost every weekend, at least one day, most or two days.
What's the normal.
We also switched the elections.
Ceiling?
It's not the ceiling, it's the wall.
The wall.
We have to scrape it, and then we're not sure how far down it would need to be scraped. It may be the whole wall, and we don't know what's under it to know if we could just put new covering on it or if.
The exterior wall or?
Interior.
Interior.
Bubbling air.
We think we had ceiling tiles. It was leaking into the ceiling tiles in the, hang, they came and fixed the AC, I guess, but, so now we're missing some ceiling tiles in the kitchen.
Probably the big issue is when you start down the wall, where does it become solid and you don't have to take it all wet and floor?
So, if we don't rent it out, what are we gonna do with it?
You gotta fix it or it's just gonna get worse.
Yeah. Is this gonna be dormant? Just the storage area? Or what are we gonna do with it if we don't fix it?
Well, I would like to see it fixed. It's just we don't have money to rent it out and do it.
I don't know what it is, but we also have evidence upstairs.
Can you, can you get some bids? What, just wanna take the fix and then we can go, oh my God, no. But now.
No, we could get bids to, we just can't do it this year.
But, but there's a lot of activity there. I think we'd get a lot, we'll get a lot of feedback if that becomes known.
Well, we're getting feedback on how it looks too.
Well, and from our insurance.
See, insurance company's sorry.
Insurance companies have a big issue there. Insurance companies saying we shouldn't rent it out. I mean, that sounds pretty.
Understood, but I don't want us to indefinitely just not have the funds to fix it in three years from now. We, it's just.
It's been like this. I mean, how do we know we don't have the money to fix it? We don't know what it costs. Is there, are we absolutely broke? That we have no money?
The general fund is very tight. You can't use utility money to fix that room. So, it's, it would be general fund. We do charge fifty dollars per rental to rent the community room, so there's only, I think, about a thousand dollars in that account. Fifty dollars takes a little while to build up.
It's been like this for several years. So, if we can just continue, and then maybe twenty twenty-four, we, we have a plan. If somebody goes in there and says, I don't like the way it looks, they don't have to rent it.
Correct.
I mean, we hear that, but just go somewhere else and go to Hallsville. But it's not like it's life and death evil when we have to find a way for falling plastic.
I don't think a waiver gets you out of trouble. You know what I mean?
It's not that bad yet, is it?
But, but, well, a piece can fall off. I mean, there's, it's not, we'll look at it after we leave today. It, it needs attention, and it probably, rightly so, needs attention based upon the insurance is concerned, risk management.
Yeah.
And we don't want somebody to get hurt. So, here we're back to legalities, but I always say, you gotta think about the legalities because you gotta think about the people and how it impacts, and that's why you get to a legality always. So, we don't want some kid out there, a piece of that plaster fall off and hit him in the head, you know, or an adult, either one. I mean, wouldn't hurt. If I was having him hit in the head, it's no problem. There's no lawsuit. He just bounced off my head. But my point is, it, it is probably at a point that's concerning if it is high. It's fifteen, eighteen feet in the air. So, you know, a eight-ounce piece of that stuff fall off.
Let's get some bids. Let's get some bids and make.
There had been ARPA money. Is that not available anymore?
There's another six million dollars as well.
Well, no, I mean, when that original thing of ARPA money came out, Heather had allotted so much to fix it.
Right.
But I think we used that to fix the exterior wall or the ceiling.
I think it was that, that ARPA money was to go to the tuck pointing.
Okay.
And possibly the roof.
That's where it went to then, okay.
Which the roof has to be fixed.
Oh, yes.
Otherwise, you're gonna have all the problem inside. So, you gotta get the top fixed. The tuck pointing needs to be done really.
No, it did. I know that.
It's so willing. I mean, we, you know, and if you neglect it long enough, you have a big, a big amount to do, right? To get it back up, that's what probably is.
Is there any lead pipes in it?
I don't know. Will that fix it?
I mentioned the Chris that we also recently switched holding to all the elections in City Hall, and they sent me a notice that sometime in October, maybe November, they're going to come and do an inspection. So, I don't know.
There's several, there are several different.
Don't know when it'll become of that, but that's.
Even in the city, they could.
Well, why don't we try to get some sort of an assessment of what they think?
Yeah.
So, we know what we're working with moving forward. We need to know that if we shut it down for six months and we're trying in the next budget year or whatever, I just don't, it's really easy, it's really easy when you take something away, then it never comes back.
Yeah, that's.
And I'm not saying that's what we're intending to do.
That's not our intent.
No, I know, understood, but. But having a plan ahead of time and knowing what's gonna cost, and what kind of budget for it, and know, helps us be able to get that back as a service.
And shut it down and go, it's gonna be this long before we can get it back up? Just.
Well, we can have an idea. It gives us a better idea, but we gotta know what it's gonna take for us to get finished.
We're not gonna make it look like an opera hall, but we can just get it fixed where.
Well, take it where there's no risk, not get to risk and, you know.
Do you have hours to go, and to continue taking reservations as well?
Let's look at, let's go look at it. It's just been like that for a long time.
I'd say we suspend taking reservations, keep existing appointments open until we can make a decision in our next year.
Don't want to use it, then don't have to use it.
Go on and knock off the hanging plaster, that way it won't fall. Get some.
Well, but, yeah, when you see it out there, I'm afraid you're gonna be knocking down plaster for three days because that's a big wall.
Is it for that?
It starts with, and it sits that plaster, hits it's that, I mean, it's, yeah. But, yeah, I thought the same thing when I looked at it. I said, no, man, that's, that's gonna be a never-ending. You might, the whole wall's gonna potentially have to be, you know, probably, should be proud. Because you fix this up here than this below it, you know, I mean, you gotta get to where your, your good margin, you know, of material is left. It's tight, so. If it got wet up there, as much as it's leaked, it's had to have cut all the way down the backside like it did all these windows and everything in here. So. So, we'll go look at it. We'll get, let's take a walk over if we're pretty much okay with that, and just take a minute to look at it. The committee meetings, I think.
Did we give clear guidance or what?
She's gonna get pricing, and I think we're gonna suspend reservations for now, the ones that are existing, right? That's what I heard. So, everybody okay with that part of it? And then we can reconvene on it next meeting because we should have some ideas probably that.
The general fund is not gonna have the money.
Right.
Unless we cut something else.
Yeah, it is.
Sir, when you say suspend reservations, does that mean no new reservations?
No new reservations.
But you're still allowing the ones.
Those are in his place, yeah.
Thank you, sir. And that's suspend until we can at least make a decision.
Right. Um, me.
I move that we combine all of our meetings to September eighteenth.
Second.
Uh, first and second that we move our meetings to September eighteenth next month. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, to pass, our meetings will all be on September eighteenth.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Uh, first and second to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, we stand here. Thank you, everybody.